I know Anne was not going to be able to join us because she's in Iceland.
Oh, good for her.
And I'm assuming Jeff Murray will be joining us, but we may as well get started. So. If you can get us ready, Eric.
I'm actually struggling a little bit here because I got a new Zoom workplace version and I can't see where the heck the. Record is. Maybe under host tools.
Paul, any information for him?
What does it say?
He's got a new toolbox and he can't figure out how to record.
It says record to computer and that works, but.
There's no recorded live.
Request host to start cloud recording, but I'm the host.
Let me look and see. Um, let's see who's the host. Are you on? It says the host is Eric Anderson and then the co-host is Town of Andover. So which account are you?
I'm listed as Eric Anderson. I think.
So Jeff Ballard is Town of Andor.
Interesting.
Jeff Ballard, could you log off for one second and then log back?
I took away his host privileges. Let's see if that works.
Yeah, I think that was conflicting. I don't know that we have a co-host option, so.
No, it still says I have to request the host permission to record. I could probably record on my own computer.
Yeah, but then you're.
Get it off later if I have to.
Yeah, that that's plan B, but maybe can you log out and log back in, see if that fixes it? Oh, but it's it's gonna ask you to assign if you're truly the host and it asks you sign it, assign it to me.
Let's see if I can make you the host.
All the king is now the host.
So you're the host. Can you? Record the cloud?
Yes, stop. Uh, let me see, because it says now stop video. So, okay, let's see what happens.
Recording in progress.
Excellent. Win.
Awesome.
Okay, so I am going to call to order the Town of Andover Board of Selectmen regular meeting for Monday, July 8th. At seven oh seven PM and our first item of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. Under God. Liberty and justice for. Thank you very much. Well, the second item is additions and changes to the agenda. Did any of the members have anything that they'd like to add?
Give me just 10 seconds. I wanted to just double check something here.
Sure.
No, it looks like everything I requested is on there, so. Okay.
Scott, anything for you?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Alright, so we're going to move on to item three, which is public speak and we'll start with Jeff Ballard. You're first on my screen. I know you have an issue, Jeff, that you're talking about. So this is just public speak.
Uh, I'm good until we get to item number four.
Okay, you got it. Diane Granier?
Yeah, I just want to give a public kudos to Jeff Ballard and his group of people that have been working on the community garden. I think it's looking wonderful. He's been harvesting food for the food pantry, which I think is another wonderful thing and it's a big success. Um, for Andover here to have him and his group doing what they're doing and I appreciate it and I'm sure the rest of Andover residents do also, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, Leanne Hutchinson?
Hello?
Yes.
Yes, I was just, I was just curious as to whether or not the Andover's finest program from a year or so ago was going to be. An ongoing thing or yearly or quarterly or something. I don't have anyone new to submit or anything. I was just curious. Um, what the format. Um, if that's going to be ongoing or um, if that's just to be determined.
Uh, it will be ongoing. It'll probably be something that we do annually, but we have not. Um, we're in the thickest summer. So soon as we get out of the summer, we'll figure something. Okay. Thank you. Uh, Bill Penn?
Uh, no comments. I'm just eavesdropping tonight. Thank you.
Excellent. Uh, Joanne Ebert?
I'm all set. Thanks.
Alright, and then I assume that six one two two is Mike and Kathy Pelosi. Is that accurate? No? Okay, uh, phone number eight six oh nine one six six one two two, public speak. Let me see, am I missing anybody?
Uh, there's another phone on there last four three eight one five.
That was Leanne Hutchinson.
That was Leanne, yeah.
So I don't know how everybody else feels, but if. The six one two two doesn't unmute to identify themselves, I'm going to remove them.
Kathy Pelosi.
It is?
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought it was. I thought I heard them speaking during.
If I can just speak, um, Kathy uh, texted me, they're having problems getting on. That is her and they're having some technical issues.
Okay, that is her, that is her cell phone number. I checked in my contacts. I have Kathy Pelosi on speed dial in case I need her. Alright, um. We're going to now move on from public speak. If I did not miss anyone, if I missed anyone, please speak up. No? Okay, item four, um, board and commission presentations, uh, A, library board of directors. Do we have anything for the library board today, Diane? I didn't believe so.
That was, I, I think that I was supposed to be, uh. Talking about whether the board of selectmen has come to a. A decision on a location for Daniel Polino's Burnap tall clock. Um, last, the last, the last time I addressed the board of selectmen, um, I was asked whether there was any issue to. You know, any rush on it and there hasn't been. It's been ongoing for. Uh, since last fall, has, has have people that have the border selectman read the seventeen page. Uh, Arthur Livernt, a report on the Burnett block.
Uh, I reviewed it. I'm not sure that I could tell you I uh, got through all seventeen pages.
I'm wrong. Did we, did we originally say we, we were going to put it in the community room in the town hall? I thought we talked about putting it in there, but we didn't come to a conclusion. I'm trying to remember from a couple of months ago.
It was, uh, uh, my understanding was that it was on hold until you figure out what's going on with the new building and the community room. And I was asked whether there was any urgency in this and I said, no.
Okay, so.
Right, because you told us it was being refurbished. It's ready to be, it's ready to be displayed. Um, the last, uh, I heard from Daniel Polino. Um, which is back in April was that, uh, Mr. Trump, who was repairing the clock. Had personal problems and it's ready to set up, but I haven't heard anymore. He, but. Um, he wanted, there were two conditions. Um, A, that, that, um, Dennis O'Brien were to reach out. Um, to Daniel Polino and I had given Eric his, Daniel Polino's contact information. Not to establish a contract between the town and Daniel Polino. So everything is. Clear and, and everybody's on the same page. And then he was not happy with the library. Um, display area, which is to the right of the exit going out of the library small wall because it was traffic pattern. And he wanted an alternate place to display the clock.
So, uh, Jeff, um, we're actually having the grand opening for the new building in August. If we can all get down there and then look at the room you're in and the, the community center, if we can find a. Unacceptable location, we'll sit there and do that. So why don't we plan on doing that this month into next month? So we can have an answer for you.
That's fine.
I think, I think I, we have to see what, for, once it's furnished in there, I, I just don't want to pick a spot and it's going to be high traffic. So I think it's best to maybe get an idea, the grand opening, but.
No, no, I, we're, we're talking about the community room, not the new building.
So the room that he's in, that we can also put it there, which is going to be low traffic, but. Well, let's do this offline and get together with Jeff and, and truly sit down and say, okay. What is the purpose? Where is it going to be? Why is it going to be there? So let's do this after the fact, Paul. So Jeff, we'll get with you, uh, outside of this meeting to do this.
That's fine. Uh, you had requested pictures and sizes of the clock, which I had supplied.
Okay, and that's in the seventeen page document.
I believe so.
Okay. Alright, um, community gardens. Or B.
Okay, um, thank you very much for, um, for allowing us to have the fence. I was a little disappointed that we didn't get the extra five feet in front of the beds. But it is up and it's functional. I am asking permission, since we don't have power to, um, the shed, so we can't use a shallow well pump. To supply water collected, um, to the irrigation system. And so I am doing research on solar panels and a solar pump. For the shed to supply enough, the pump pressure just to pump the collected rainwater to the irrigation system. That was the first thing that I was asking that I'd like to request. And the second is that I've been in contact with an apiary, well, beekeeper from Willa Manic, who used to do the, uh. Farmer's market down at the church. And he is very enthusiastic about setting up hives outside the garden fence. Which would promote pollinators and be an educational tool for the elementary school and people involved with the garden.
Okay, on the, um, solar panels, can you at least get with Eric and have you gotten with Eric? To review where to put them in, how much power is potentially going to be generated?
No, I'm, I'm still doing the research to find out whether. Whether it's applicable to, to our, um. To our garden pump and, and our, our irrigation system. I have gone to Columbia, uh, community garden and they're doing gravity feed from a thousand gallon tank on the hill.
Okay.
And so. Pump for a deep well.
Alright, so if you can sit there and, and come back to us. You know, I don't think anybody, I, I will not have a problem with you doing it as long as it's, uh. Going to do what you want and we're not going to have problems related to it. Uh, but come back to us when you have all of the details sorted out and, and I recommend you get with Eric quickly, uh, to. Go through that to sit there and see if it's a viable solution for what you're trying to do, Jeff, um.
The other question I had was, uh, have the board of selectmen go, at least visited the garden and seen, seen what we're, we're doing down there?
Yeah, that's great. That looks really great.
Beautiful, Jeff. I haven't seen it with the fence. I haven't been in town for a week and a half.
We also have, um, a Facebook page.
I'm not. Sorry. Uh, I will be down there on Thursday and I will look at it, Jeff. So if you're there, I will go in the back and pick, uh, a tomato if little cherry tomatoes are down already.
You're going to have a problem with that. It's all locked up.
Okay, I'll walk around the outside. As far as the bees.
Yeah. In favor of the bees.
Uh, I would be, I would be in favor of the bees, but what I would tell you to do is you gotta go get permission from the school. Because the beehives are pretty close to the school and you gotta make sure that we're not causing school any undue problems. So go, if the superintendent approves of the bees, then come back and. You know, I, I'm, I'm all in favor of you utilizing bees and. You know, but. It's a, it's a bigger issue than just us saying yes. Um, we're close to school property and we want to be good neighbors. So. Alright.
Yeah, at one point when I was a kid, there were beehives located on the school property, but that was a long time ago. I don't know when they were or how long they were, but I know at least at one point. Their property.
Okay, well, if, um, the principal and the school superintendent approve of. The bees being where Jeff and his group want to put them, um. Come back to us and. I think we'll be fine.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else have any other questions for Jeff or any other issues? Nope. Agenda item five, appointments. Eric, any appointments?
Uh, not at this time, although I suggest you all make a few appointments tonight, but that's later on in the agenda.
Okay. Item six, resignations, uh, six A, Steve Nelson from PNZ. I'm assuming that all the other members saw the resignation letter in our packet. And Jed and, um. The PNZ group are going to, um, put out a request for a new member. Is that accurate, Scott?
Yeah. It's already been advertised for about three weeks now, something like that.
Pat- Patrick put his name in, Patrick Dillerty. That he would be interested in. Being a member.
Alright, that's good. Um, item seven, uh, town administrators report. I know we didn't get a tangible written report, but let's hear our verbal report from Eric.
Sure, uh, so real quick, I've been gone a lot of this month, so I don't have a ton to report. Um, the HVC system for the town hall is completed. Uh, it's largely been commissioned, other than we still need to hook up the, the propane, the, the boiler itself has to be commissioned. Um, they're currently working this week on the fire department, uh, HVC. Um, so hopefully that will be completed by the end of this week. Uh, we had found an engineer that would have evaluated the plumbing issues and given us a work plan for the, uh, elementary school. Um, the school board of education decided that they weren't particularly happy with that. And wanted to, uh, find a different engineer. So, um, that's delayed indefinitely. If they come back to us with a different engineer. Um, I guess we'll evaluate that proposal, um, and then go from there. Um, as far as.
Can I ask a question on that? Why? What was the issue related to the engineer selected?
I have no idea. They just said they wanted to find one on their own. Pretty much. Uh, community center update. Um, unfortunately, not a whole lot of work went on over the last three weeks while we were gone. Um, they are supposed to be in tomorrow, uh, doing the final grading and seeding in the front area. Um, and I've kind of transferred responsibility for the back area to Public Works because I think we need to get the grading set. And I, I don't really at this point have all that much faith. Uh, in their site contractor that it'll get done correctly if we leave it with leading edge. So other than that, they did paint all the lines for the parking lots this afternoon, so that came out well. Um, we are scheduled to get the tree, the lilac tree that will go in the center of the island. Looking at picking that up Wednesday and installing that Wednesday and Thursday, uh, with Public Works. Um, been working with the beautification commission and Christine Randazzo on kind of like an overall plan. For landscaping, um. With the intention of picking all the plants selected up at the end of this week. Uh, and her intention is to plant them as soon as next Monday, so we can. Uh, get them established and water them and, and have them in and looking good, uh, prior to the grand opening. So those are the major things relative to the community center. Um, Scott, you want to add anything?
No, no. Sounds good.
Okay. Obviously, transfer station stickers are in full swing. We have, uh, done reasonably well with that. We don't have too many. Uh, unhappy people relative to that, so it's a good thing. Um, da, 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 da. Um, I am meeting with, uh, Mrs. Hutchinson. Um, regarding tree trimming on her property, uh, in relation to the Bunker Hill Bridge. Um, so I'm meeting with her tomorrow morning. Um, hopefully that they won't have a problem with allowing the town to do some limited clearing. Prior to the start of the federal local bridge programs, we get around the, the federal restrictions on time of year, we're allowed to clear and grow up. Long Hill Bridge, uh, I emailed everybody today and I just sent you all the Zoom link. Um, tomorrow is the meeting for the Long Hill Bridge design at seven PM tomorrow. Uh, so if you want to hear more information about that, what bridge type was selected? Ask any questions you want to ask, um, that will be, uh, you have that and I believe that's on the town's website. Uh, also. Um, and that's basically all I have unless you have questions for me directly.
On the Long Hill Bridge, um, I will not be able to attend that, but I'm assuming Eric that that is going to be, um.
Corded?
An a suitable exterior design? You know, we had talked about the type of aesthetic look of that bridge because of where it's located, um. Are you going to put, we're going to push for that, correct?
Yes, we are going to push for that. Yes, we are gonna push for that being a little more aesthetic. This, the replacement is quite a bit wider and also quite a bit longer. The existing bridge has a free span of forty feet. The replacement has a free span of eighty feet. So it'll have a lot more volume capability to handle high water. And yeah, and it's it's wider, so it will be travel lanes plus two shoulders plus a dedicated walkway on the bridge itself.
Yeah.
I think Jeff's talking about the outside if we're gonna, they're gonna put like stone facade on it.
Yes, we we have, that was discussed early on and we did say that we wanted, because that was in a highly visible location. We wanted the aesthetic treatment on the outside of the bridge, so it looks appropriate to the area.
All right, that's good. It's gonna be that big and it's gonna move that much water. Hopefully it won't. It'll allow less watery pushback onto the field, Scott.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
It wouldn't be a terrible idea for a couple members of the public to mention the problems with traffic. Because even though I continue to hammer them, they, it would be nice for them to hear from the public that they're concerned about, you know, traffic delays on Route Six once everything has to go out and he wrote. So if anybody or you happen to be on that call and you happen to bring up that point while it's being recorded by the D O T and putting it on the record, that would be good.
Okay, so your your concern, just so we're clear, is traffic delays on to six during construction.
Correct. Yep.
Right now, it's it's delayed at like four in the afternoon, right? I mean, the the traffic is backed up to sometimes Wales Road, I think, from light at three sixteen. So if they.
That's, so we're asking them, something screwed up with the signal again.
Yeah.
So I have asked Jay to to call their signals division directly and get them back out here to re-tweak it. Because that that is, that does appear to be a problem. I got a couple complaints about that today.
Yeah, so. But 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 you're bringing up the fact that everybody's gonna be going down N D. And there's gonna be more traffic backed up on Route Six trying to get out on Route Six.
Especially since there's no light.
Especially since there's no light.
It will definitely be a problem. There's no question about that.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions for Eric? Okay, we're gonna move on to item eight, old business, eight A, community center construction update. Eric gave us that mostly in his administration administrators report. Scott, do you have anything that you really want to add for us?
Oh, no, they still have a lot to do inside here. Like Eric said, not a lot got done, very few things got done in the two weeks they was gone. The major thing was the sidewalk in the back got deleted. They're working on it now, but it's not coming along as quickly as we'd like to see.
Okay. The, one second, I needed to pull up something.
Eric Sanders did say he felt that they could deliver that they would have substantial completion by the nineteenth. That is his goal.
The nineteenth of July. Okay. Okay, Apollo, just to make sure that everybody's aware, the, well, it's on here, forget it. Eight B, discussion of blight and level of involvement. In our packet, there was a blight and violation status report dated June fifth. Eric, anything that you want to add to this or anybody have any issues?
No, other than we already have, we have our advertising for Jim's replacement as a zoning and blight enforcement officer. But I don't think we've really gotten any replies yet to it.
And then just related to this, there was you sent us a Crog legislative update. And I believe there's new law passed that all fines can be leaned against properties.
That is true. We can, for both light and now for zoning violations, you can lean properties for zoning violations now.
Okay, and so have we applied for the liens, especially on the that one individual property that's listed?
Not that I know of. I don't know whether he's paid the town off or not. I know he was officially fined, but I don't know what the status of that is.
Okay, so can we make sure that we put forth a lien on that so that we can get compensated for all the effort that has gone into that, trying to get that property cleaned up?
It's very good to see that long list of the blighted properties and that we're continuing to work on this.
Yeah, there are a lot of these that have been resolved and there's some that are pending, but it was a very thorough list. It was interesting to read and it's sad we're going to have to replace our our blight enforcement agent and our zoning agent. Sad to see that. Okay, any other questions on that? Okay, eight C advisory boards for the senior community center. We had received various people that were putting their names forth to serve on those committees. Let's go through those names. So Linda Armstrong, Linda Chacy, Doris Maldano, Katie V's for the Community Center Advisory Committee. Is that all of the individuals, Eric?
That is, but I think there are a couple people that would cross, like if they didn't get on the senior center advisory committee, would consider the Community Center Advisory Committee.
And what would the reason be for us not to appoint all of them?
I think for the community center, one, I probably would appoint all of them. For the senior center, one, you're gonna have to just make a decision, how big is too big? You know, how effective for that committee? You know, and that then the question is, do you want people double dipping? Do you want people on multiple committees? Or do you want to take the people that are already, for instance, on the rec committee? That's also advisory board to also be on a second board. And there's no right or wrong answer. Those are just things you ought to consider.
Well. I'm not. These are advisory boards and hopefully there'll be people that are participating and that will volunteer to do do positive programs for the individual groups. I don't see any reason to. I mean, the only one that is on the rec mission is Carol Lee. Isn't that accurate?
Correct. Kim Hawes is also on the rec mission. And, you know, look, they both be fine advisors. I'm not, it's just the question is, do you want that? How many do you want to pick? I personally think eleven is a little unwieldy for an advisory committee.
Way, way unwieldy.
Well, why don't we do, what if we do alternates if somebody's not available?
All right, so why don't we put Kim Hawes, Carol Lee on. I mean, listen, I read the resume for Katie V's. I put her on both. I mean, I look at, I look at Kathy Palazzi and George Knox and they've all been participating in this. Roberta has participated, Linda Armstrong has participated.
Sure.
Well, what's, how, I guess, how are these meetings gonna function? I would imagine they're all meeting at the same time, or are they? Are we separating them like? I guess we have to kind of understand that first, right?
I don't think we're talking about a single meeting which has the senior committee, the community committee and the rec committee all meeting at once with this person. I think that's way too unwieldy. I think we're looking at, you know, kind of defining roles for each of those three groups and say, you know, kind of here's your wheelhouse, here's what we're looking for in terms of advice.
Okay. So you had Linda Armstrong.
But Linda said she would, she would jump over to the other side.
Yeah, and you have Linda, Linda, I mean, all of these individuals with the exception of Doris. So you get Katie.
I wish these pages were, I have to keep scrolling back and forth to look at names.
Yeah.
Side by side here.
Well, then. So we have Linda, Linda Armstrong. Okay.
Eric, could you separate them and put them on a list and share it?
Listen, let's, let's, I'm gonna nominate for the Community Center Advisory Committee, Linda Armstrong, Linda Chase, Doris Maldonado and Katie V's.
One second.
That was five, Jeff?
There's four of them.
So can you say that again, so I get it written down? Doris, Linda Armstrong.
Linda Armstrong, Linda Cassie, and I'm not sure I'm pronouncing her name correctly. Doris Maldonado and Katie V's for the Community Center Advisory Committee.
Okay.
And it was seconded in, so especially Doris and Katie, I know their requests were very and Doris also. So we're nominating those, let's, let's vote on that, all those in favor?
Hang on a question, I'm trying to understand. Are you thinking that recommission people are gonna be included on this side?
Well, this group is just gonna make, I mean, the way I look at this is that they'll they'll meet and they'll take, you know, input from the recommission and input from everyone and then come back to us and say, these are the programs that we should try to institute. And hopefully they'll stay involved and and work with us to get those programs instituted. I mean, all of the groups are gonna be involved. We're gonna be involved. The recommission's gonna be involved.
Okay, I understand, understand what you're saying. Okay.
Okay.
Excellent.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, three oh. All right, and then the next group, which is the the Senior Advisory Committee. So.
Kathy Palazzi.
Hold on for one second. On the list that's in our packet, Linda Armstrong is on it, Linda Chacy is on it, and Katie V's is on that. So we're not going to put them up for this committee. All right, is that acceptable to everybody?
Yes, yep.
All right, so we got Roberta Dougherty. Louise Goodman. And we're not gonna put up anyone on the rec mission because they're going to be involved in all of this. All right, Leanne Hutchinson. Joe King. George Knox. Kathy Palazzi. And Bill Penn. So that gives us
Is that seven?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven individuals.
I think that's, I think that's a fair number.
Okay. All right, and then everybody who wanted to volunteer has a position on one of the boards with the exception of Carol Lee and Kim Hawes, who are on the rec mission, who are gonna be actively involved in everything that goes on in that building. Okay.
You could, if you wanted to add alternates, you could add some of them as alternates also.
So you're saying, so we could add Kim Hawes and Carol Lee as alternates.
You could do that.
I have no problem doing that. Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion that we appoint to the Senior Advisory Committee, Roberta Dougherty, Louise Goodman, Leanne Hutchinson, Joe King, George Knox, Kathy Palazzi and Bill Penn, and that we also name Kim Hawes and Carol Lee as alternates.
I'll second that.
Okay, further discussion on that? All those in favor? Aye. Okay, three oh on that one. Right. Eight D Charter Revision Committee, we, the Charter Revision Committee has been meeting on Tuesdays. Tomorrow, we have another meeting, which is the ninth. On the sixteenth, we're anticipating having a public hearing a draft of the items that the proposed charter changes. And then we would be providing to the Board of Selectmen the draft report on the twenty second as we've been requested to do. That's it for that. Eight E, Community Center Grand Opening.
Okay, so I wanted to, I don't want to take a long time, but I wanted to talk about some updates on this and ask some questions. The recommission has met twice. I've talked to them twice about this and they are on board with working on that day. We're very, very fortunate to have them doing this, so I'm very grateful for them. We chose a date of Saturday, August tenth. I want to make sure I'm saying the right date here.
Correct.
August tenth, so Friday before, we were going to give the seniors a sneak peek after their senior lunch. They're going out of town that day, so when they come back, they're all, they're all coming back to the parking lot and then we are giving them a sneak peek. Anne and Scott are available to walk them through the building and answer any questions, so that'll give them a an opportunity to see it that day if they can't make it Saturday. An opportunity to see it that day if they can't make it Saturday, so. Saturday's event, we talked about doing from four to seven. Um, there's going to be food that the recommission is providing and drinks. Um, I, I'm suggesting, I think it makes most sense for obvious reasons, we're going to do the ribbon cutting at four o'clock. Um, I did talk to Steve Weir and M D Robin, so they are both attending that day. So I will talk to the press and invite them for some pictures and. Some things to capture that day. Um, I'm going to order a banner to put on the building, um. That'll kind of act as a temporary sign until we get our, um. Permanent sign on board, so I wanted to, well, I talked to Eric about this. The size is still to be determined because I'm trying to think of a. Location to make it work on the building. When we talked about the entrance way, I thought that was a great place for it. And then when we take our pictures, we could do the ribbon cutting there, but the problem is. It's going to hang a little low for taller people, which I don't have that problem, but, um. We're still working on the size, so, um. I have to go back down there and kind of talk to Eric, so if anybody wants to meet with us that day to kind of talk about. How, you know, how we're attaching it to the building. Eric had a good idea. Um, little fine nails, uh, I'm going to put grommets in the banner, but I just want to make sure that we. We have a sign that's going to stay up, look good, but. Keep in mind that it's a brand new building when we're putting something on.
How heavy is it banner, you think?
It's going to be a vinyl banner, so not, not heavy at all, so.
Can you just stick on things?
I don't. But then it's going to, you know, leave like a, something, uh, when you take it down.
No, they, they pull right out.
Are you talking about like double sided sticky on the banner?
Be able to do with like the three M.
Yeah. Those three M things come right out, you just pull on down.
Oh, you're talking about, so like a hook, a three M?
Yeah.
Okay. That might, that might, are they, I've used them indoors, are they good for outdoors? So if it rains, will the adhesive come off?
Yeah, there's, there's a one foot overhang there, so.
Right, but the problem with putting it. I was going to, it's not going to be, oh, you're talking about on the side of the building. I'm trying to think, is everybody okay if we put it on the side? I feel like. That's probably the best place for a banner to sit, but we won't get like a good picture opportunity during the ribbon cutting, so.
I'm talking about the front of the thing, aren't, aren't we?
Walking into the front door, it's going, it's going to hang too low there in order to have the print on the banner. Look good, that's the problem. I think it's a great spot. I think that's ideal because then when we cut the ribbon. It's across the threshold of where you're walking through to get into the building. But the banner is going to hang too low for taller people to, you know, it's.
Why can't we push the ribbon cutting out further so that the photo works and the banner is in the right spot?
What do you attach it to?
Attach the banner to the building.
No, the ribbon. The ribbon.
Can't we get like, um.
But we could pound a couple of stakes in the ground.
No, not even stakes. Why can't we get, why can't we get, um. I'm assuming. Someone has. Like, uh. If you went to the theater, you would have those two metal.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah.
We can figure it out. I mean, that's something we can figure out, Paula. Maybe what we do is we go, you and I go down there and say, okay, if this is how the photograph was taken, here's.
Yeah, well, worst comes to worst, we put the banner on the building and we keep the ribbon where the, um, the opening to the building is. I, I, we don't have to overthink it either, so. I was just trying to think of some options, um.
So like a, but some kind of plastic post, Eric, that you could possibly get from Uline, maybe?
No, we'll, we'll figure that out.
Possible. Um.
It's just weighted on the bottom. It's all it's going to be. Holding is a ribbon.
We'll, we'll figure that out.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Um. Are we, did we, don't. E, okay, let's continue with details and budget, um. I'm coming to tonight to talk about the budget for this day because we, we want to make it. You know, a fun event, we're going to have popcorn and all sorts of things and out, outdoor fun things, we're going to have a band, um, in the building. I kind of like, I'm going back and forth on this, but I like, I liked Eric's idea of wine and cheese. And we have, you know, like, uh, we, we pop a cork on, on champagne outside, but. Want to get your thoughts on this, the rest of the, uh, the board. And then that's going to kind of determine our budget because. I think the recommission was thinking sandwiches and, and, um, just simple food outside because it's going to be a hot day, so standing behind a grill. Is going to be, um, asking for a lot, so they. They would like to do, um, they're planning on doing sandwiches and waters and drinks, and then we're going to have a cake or some sort of celebratory dessert. But in the building, I think we could have some, again, speaker going with. You know, fancy music inside and that can be the kind of fancy part of the celebration, so what do we think about wine and cheese inside or? How do, how do we feel about that?
I have no problem with it. I mean. I don't necessarily know. I mean, we could have a lot of people come to this.
Hmm, I'm not, I'm not.
We could have very few people come to this.
I'm not talking about large wine glasses, you know, we're. You know, just a, like a, a board, you know, a board of like grapes and cheese inside and, and, uh, they, you know, everything's kind of out for people to take, so, um. But. Scott, do you have any problems with that?
No.
Um, I. Why don't we make it a, no. BYOB celebration, you know?
Well.
I could get out of it.
So, um, we are talking with the, um, someone's in, I don't know if Carol has yet, but we were contacting the library and the firehouse. Um, to. You know, maybe have some crafts and their popcorn and maybe a fire truck for the kids. Um, there will be a band in the gazebo. Um, and I'm thinking, I don't think we will spend this much, but. I'm asking for a budget of two thousand that day, just because, um, the band is going to be. You know, a nice touch and we want to make sure that we have enough money for that and the food. Um, I did talk to the recommission and we talked about. Comfort, comfort, comfortably saying, I think two thousand for that day, um, is going to be good with. The banner and decorations and, and other, other signs around town, so. I wanted to vote on that and see if, um. Anybody had any questions about that.
Uh, I mean, I don't have a problem with money. I think we should try to fundraise a little bit. And sit there and see if we can offset that because Eric will have to find somewhere to pull that out of because it wasn't budgeted for. Correct? Okay?
Correct. Correct, but I think. You could. You could take that out of the multi-use building fund. I think that's close enough to the. The goal of that fund, that that would be a reasonable appropriation from that one.
Okay. Then Paula, let's make your motion and, and reference that and we'll still sit there and see if we can fundraise to offset that.
Um, fundraise and do you have ideas on fundraising or, because we're. I think we can make it happen, but we're almost a month out, so.
Well, you're going to, you're going to get your two thousand dollar budget passed right now. And if you can, if we can, we'll find either some extra money or a way to offset the multi-use bu- building fund. Withdraw.
Understand, okay. I make a motion, um, to approve two thousand dollars, up to two thousand dollars for. The grand opening of the Community and Senior Center building.
I'll second.
Second that. We'll both second it.
We'll both say, now all of, all those in favor? Aye. Okay. Alright. Excellent.
Okay.
Uh, eight F, a senior, a community center director?
Can we just, there was E I I.
E I I, sorry.
And I made a typo when I sent this to Kate, so it should, instead of saying office name. I meant it to say off, official name or building sign, and this will help me. Understand what to put on the banner that day too, so. Did we, it did the committee or did we ever kind of come to a solid? Decision on what the name of the building is going to be? I just want to make sure that. Um, I understand that for the banner. I, I was suggesting, let me pull it up. Eric.
A while back. Uh, the board has decided that the official name was the Andover Senior Slash Community Center. Um, Paula had a really good thought in that it looks a lot smarter. To say Andover Senior and Community Center and just use the little and sign. Um, instead of slash, which to me, I think looks better, but that's just me.
Um, I, can I make a recommendation that we switch, switch it and we say Handover Community and Senior Center?
Right, I, I would agree with Jeff on that. That's what I would suggest also.
We can call it the ACSC for short.
ACSC is.
I don't like, sorry, Jeff, I don't like that.
You don't like that? The initials?
I don't like that, no.
Uh, uh, no, 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 I wasn't saying, I was saying that for other things. Uh, the building, the official name of the building, and the reason why I'm saying that is because. I like having senior center at the end of it.
Okay. Um, can I share my screen?
Sure.
Hopefully give a visual here. Um.
Cheers.
Yeah.
Oh, say that again.
Say what again?
Sorry, my, my internet's, uh, stalled out. What did you say, Eric?
Oh, sorry, I was talking to John Chapon, it's just waved goodbye. He's had enough for the day.
Oh. So you're saying, um, Jeff, the Andover Community.
Just switch community and see, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And probably put the ampersand on the bottom.
Does it have to have the in it?
Um, for this purpose, I think it makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, but then the final sign, is it going to say the?
Um, I, I think.
Well, we don't have to put it on the side of the building if you're asking that, Scott.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
I kind of think you're going to get the senior contingent wound up. If you put Community Center first, person.
Kathy Palazzi, will I wind you up if I put community first? You can speak, please.
Okay, um, I personally, I like it to say Grand Opening Andover Community and Senior Center. We can sell that, we can buy it, it's great.
Okay.
Thank you, Kathy.
But I don't like the word the, take that out. Sorry, Paula.
You don't like the.
Yeah, I like Andover Community and Senior Center.
Right.
Pretty perfect.
So the official name is now going to be Andover Community and Senior Center.
Yes.
You have great taste, Kathy.
Um. It looks better visually without the.
Yes.
I think it's, I, I'm in my. Marketing and communication brain, it makes more sense with the, but visually. Alright, I'm going to chew on that, Kathy and Scott, I'll chew on.
Yeah, it does, good, and if you said community, if you said senior center and community. What, building, it, nah, nah, it wouldn't look good.
I mean, you don't want to put a slash, you don't, you don't. Slash. And over community and senior center. I mean, because basically what it's saying, it's a community center and a senior center, so the and. Is, is getting to. Center.
Right.
I, I have no problem with that as a name, and then we can put that on the side of the building. You know, um, you know, we could put it on the side of the building with Andover. And then community and senior center underneath it, Paula, so. Like you could sit there and go Andover Community and Senior Center all in one line kind of thing, so, but you play with that and we'll. We'll live with what you come up with.
Okay, well, I just wanted to nail down the official name so that we can get the banner, um, finalized, so, okay, thank you for.
Okay, and. And I didn't have it by today, leading edge had promised me proofs. Of the name for what they were going to put, propose to put on the side of the building. So now we're going to change it and it's going to say Andover and then underneath. Community and Senior Center, correct? So that's what I'm telling him the new proof needs to be.
Say that, well, yes, one more time, Andover.
Andover on one line and then. Community and Senior Center on the next line. Or do you want it three lines?
Well, no.
Won't fit on two, it won't fit, um.
Please, please share.
Why isn't it just the same way?
Yeah, why can't we just do it, um, on two, oh, but three lines, but look, the ampersand would be three lines.
Yes. Um, Eric, share the proof, share the proof from Leading Edge with Paula. Alright, and, and the team, so we can just see it, but I'm assuming Eric, like I, in my head, Eric. You could put Andover on a double sized font on the side of the building and then, you know. Community and Senior Center underneath it in a smaller font, it might work appropriately for what we're trying to do. I'm assuming they're going to have. Either. Carved out letters or something. Different. I, I'd like to see it, so, but that's how I would imagine it would be, it would be like Andover in a bigger font and then. Community and Senior Center in a smaller font underneath it and it would space itself out correctly.
Yeah, let's, let's see, if you don't mind, Eric, send me the, send me the proof when they have that for you.
Well, I mean, now the proof that we asked for is irrelevant. So, I mean, we're going to have to tell them how we want the thing if we're going to get a proof that you want. So. Why don't you give me a copy of what you want for a proof and I'll have them make that.
Well, they're designing it, so are they, are they giving you only one or two edits or? What, okay.
Paula, Paula, if you get on with me after.
I don't know, but look, this is the lowest bit, so.
Paula, if you and I can get together, we can use your graphic skills and come up with something and then give it back to Eric.
But I, I, yeah, I understand what you're saying, Jeff, with. I, I get it, I just don't, I would have to look at it visually with the proof, I just know what, so, yeah.
Yeah, but what Eric, what Eric is sitting there saying is. Give them the basic of the design that we're looking to have and then they'll sit there and create a proof and then we'll look at it again and side off on it, so.
I can fix what I have tonight, Eric, and send it to you and then they can run with it. Tell them this is what the banner is going to look like, but I'll fix it. Based on what Jeff just suggested, and then I can email it to you and you can send it to them, sound good?
Okay, yeah, if you could get that to me tomorrow, so I can send it off.
Yeah, I'll get it to you tonight.
It's. Okay, awesome.
Yeah.
Okay. Paula, are we all set with AD?
Yes, yes.
Alright, we're going to move on to eight F, uh, Senior Community Center Director, um. Eric.
So real quick, um, because you're the Board of Selectmen, you got to sign off on the interview panel for that. My suggestion would be myself, a Board of Selectmen member. The, uh, the director for the, basically the equivalent job title in Coventry. Um, has agreed to sit in on the interview panel for this. She seemed like a really knowledgeable candidate, um, not candidate, but, but, uh, um. You know, director in her own right, and then who else do you want to serve on the pen? So we need to get, get cracking on this. I need to know who you as a board want to have in, sitting on that interview pen.
Have somebody from the rec commission participate?
Okay, who do you want?
Uh, ask the rest, rec commission, who would, you know? Who would be? Who would be available and would want to do it? I mean, obviously. You know, Carol is there, but, uh, you know, if there's other member of the board, uh, the Rec Commission that would wanna do it, no problem, and then. Um, why not, I mean, how many do you wanna limit this to, four?
And I certainly wouldn't want more than four, yeah.
Okay, so then, we just need a member of the Board of Selectmen, so. I mean, I'll participate in that. When, when is the plan on, or Scott, or Paula, any of us, doesn't matter, when's the, when's the schedule?
Um, so depending on who we pick, I would circulate all the resumes that we have. So far, and ask you all who you wanted to interview, and then set it up as fast as I can.
Um, Scott, do you wanna participate in this, or Paula? I mean, I.
I'd rather see you or Paula.
I, I started a new job, so I'm, I'm not available during the day as much as I used to be, so.
Sounds like me. Um, Eric, get me the timeline, and I'll make sure I'm available. So, it's me, you, the individual from Coventry, and a member from the Rec Commission.
Okay, do you wanna senior rep on that too? Or are you planning, cause I'm too young to be the senior rep for that?
Well, with my hair, I can qualify.
Fair enough, okay.
Eight G, Board of Selectmen Future Goals Meeting. So Eric, you had said you didn't wanna do it during a regular scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting. And you were gonna talk to the other members, and I know you and I had a discussion as to my goals and what I would wanna do, um, when do you wanna do this, and? Let's put it on the calendar.
Well, maybe because we're missing. Yeah, we're missing two board members, so.
Let's, let's talk about this next meeting, Eric, but we still wanna do it in September because we're fairly busy, even now that it's summer, it's July. August is gonna be a meeting, and then also the grand opening, so we're gonna have some issues in August, so. Uh, we'll, we'll schedule it for September, but we'll schedule it next meeting, so put this on old business for next meeting. Eight H, Public Information Meeting for, for the Long, uh, Hill Road Bridge. Eric, you talked about that already. Right, so, um, that's tomorrow, correct?
That is tomorrow.
And is it Zoom meeting?
It is a Zoom meeting.
What time is it?
It's at seven PM.
Seven PM, okay.
And the Zoom link is on the town's website. I also sent it all to you individually.
Is it a town meeting or DOT meeting?
It is run by the DOT. It is a public meeting.
Okay, no, I was more interested in, there's also a meeting for, um. There's a meeting for, uh, charter revision, and I didn't want there to be a conflict on the town's Zoom account.
No, that's not on the towns, that is very definitely, this is run by DOT. Um, we are, we are guests in their meeting.
Alright, eight I, uh, Ordinance for Dogs on the Fields, we're gonna push that off till, um. Um, our next meeting, if, and anyone does have a problem with that. Okay, um, we'll move on to nine, um. Um, we're gonna go into New Business, uh, Veterans Memorial, um, Field, the Soccer Camp Bill.
So, just wanted to touch base. Vale has their, um, their second session for their summer session coming up, so, um. I was gonna talk to Zach and just kinda have a conversation, but wanted to bring everybody up to speed with the dates. For that, and then, um, I think Eric and I, Eric, you and I kinda talked about this a little bit. Is there anything else that you wanna share from that conversation that you and I had?
No, I mean, the only, the only thing we really need from them is how many people they had in each session. Really, cause that's how we structured the, the financial arrangement between the two of them.
Well, why don't we get that information for the first session, and Scott, well, I'm sure we'll have some feedback as to what. He's seen, and then we'll all sit there and see what the second section looks like, so we can make sure that we're all in semi-alignment.
Yeah, okay, and, um, I'll call Zach this week and, um, talk to him about, just to. Get a heads up, and it's gonna, from what Eric was telling me, it's two fiscal years, so it'll be two different, you know, sessions and bills, so. Um, okay.
Alright, um, nine B, the Plan of Conservation and Development Vision Statement. Eric, I know you included that into our packet.
Yeah, I just thought you guys should, should be aware of where, uh, the. Uh, Zoning Commission was going in terms of the Plan of Conservation and Development. Um, this is kinda how they decided to structure the next P O C D, starting with. A set of vision statements, and then grouping. The, the discussion and the topics based on, on those vision statements, so that gives you kinda the outline of what the. Uh, their objectives are with the P O C D, uh, and where they're going with it. So, I think they've been working really hard on it, and, and, uh. I think we're gonna end up with a great product.
Okay, uh, Scott, do you wanna add to that?
No, just, you know. When you get a minute, take some time and read it.
I did, I thought it was good.
Very good.
Nine C, uh, Department of Public Works Salt Contract. Um, so Eric, you had two different competing bids, Cargill and one of the other lower ones, which one are you going with?
Yeah, so what Jay asked is that the, the lowest bid was Morton, it's about three bucks a ton lower. But we really struggled with them the last time, you know, we had Morton, I think, three years ago as our supplier. Um, and we really struggled with them, frankly, uh, getting supplies. Um, on a timely fashion before we ran out of salt. So Jay has asked that we go with Cargill, which is three bucks more, uh, a ton, so it's not. You know, free, but, you know, they've been very successful, and, and we know when we call them, we get our salt, and we have no problems, so. That would be my, but, but because we're not taking the lowest bidder, I thought that's an appropriate discussion to be having with the Board of Selectmen. Um, and not me necessarily making on my.
A motion to, uh, use Cargill as our. Player.
On second.
Okay. No problem, um, just to make everyone aware, so the. Maximum difference between the two is twenty-one oh four, twenty-one hundred dollars and four. Basically, Eric, we have four hundred ton or eight hundred ton, we have a minimum of four hundred ton we're obligated for?
Right. So, that's, the, the way it works is, um. You give them your best guess at to how, as to how much you're going to use. Um, and, but you're obligated to take at least half of that. Um, and you can take more too, but, you know, then if you take more than eight hundred tons. They've only ensured that the supply is there for you to take eight hundred tons, so, so up to eight hundred tons, you know they can deliver. And the other thing to keep in mind is that this is just treated salt. Um, we also buy untreated salt, which was not, which is not available on the frog bid. Um, we buy that off the state bid, cause that's cheaper, and we use that earlier in the year when it's warmer. So we stock both treated and untreated salt, um. You know, so we save the town a little money earlier in the year when we don't need stuff that works in really cold weather.
Okay, so before we vote on this, so, the difference between Cargill and Morton, um, the full usage of eight hundred tons is. Two thousand one hundred and four dollars.
Correct.
Okay. Alright, so. Scott, you'd made motion, Paula, you had seconded it, so, any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we'll be moving forward with Cargill. Okay, item ten, Approval of Minute Meetings for six, ten, twenty twenty-four.
I make a motion to approve the beating minutes of January tenth, twenty twenty-four.
June tenth.
Sorry, wow, long day. Twenty twenty-four.
No problem, I'll second. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Uh, item eleven, uh, Treasurer's Report. Any questions or issues related to what, um, Cheryl provided, and, and Cheryl did, uh, just to let everybody know. Like, if we look at this, um. In our, um. Eric, um, oh, that's, that's the balance. So, we'd have to go to the second set of this, so, we just, I just received an, an email from Cheryl, the Treasurer, that the total. Um, interest earned on the stiff account was, uh, in excess of a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, so I think that's great news. And good job by Eric and Cheryl to make that happen and get that, our money making money for us, so I think that's very positive. Any other questions or anybody else going through this, and, and having anything that, um. They have questions on?
How much money did, do we have in there? Three point two?
Uh, I think the number is three point two million there, I mean.
But it depends.
Yeah.
Yeah, we move money in and out monthly, so we make sure we make payroll and everything else, but we leave everything we can in this dip account.
Yeah, at the end, at the end of June, it was. According to the interim balance sheet is three four, three million four twenty-seven, five forty-seven, and we probably need to do a better job. Of maximizing that for as long as we can, and before the interest rates drop, so, um. It's something that we need to get, um, and I'll probably get with Celeste, we need to, um. Try to have as much money, a combined money, including the AES balance in that account. So that we maximize our interest and the earning potential, so I'll sit there and I'll get with Celeste. This month, to sit there and see what we can do related to that.
You know, the, the other alternative that Cheryl and I have been discussing. Is that. Instead of doing it that way. We continue the way we've been doing, which is funding the school in, uh, early increments. Um, so initially, when we asked the state, the state had said we were only allowed to have. One stiff account per entity. Um, and when we asked, they said that includes the school. However, we found out an awful lot of other towns have multiple stiff accounts. So we went back and asked that specifically and said, hey, can a school and a town both have a stiff account? So, one of the options would be just to encourage the school to get their own stiff account and put that money. Into a stiff account. The problem with that is technically, a school is only be. Supposed to be spending what is budgeted, and because that's not budgeted. That excess should go back to the town anyway. But, what we could do is if the school set up their stiff account. We could make an agreement with the school board, that that money would automatically flow. Into the, you know, the AES capital fund. That way, in a sense, the school is still taking advantage of it, and that's that much less money that we as a town. Have to put into that capital fund.
Okay, um, well, let's sit there and see how quickly we can get that account set up, and then I'll have a conversation with Celeste and see if we can get that done.
Well, I, I think they would have to set that up.
You sure it's not the treasurer? Well, who has to set it up, and then we'll get that done. Alright, um. Any other questions related to the Treasurer's Report? Okay. One second. Okay, um. Uh, one thing that I wanted to discuss, and it's, it's part of the, the groups, but it's not here, Eric put in. It is page.
Page four.
Page four of our document. It was the information that I've been requesting for, um. Top ten taxpayers related to vehicles, um. Of the top ten, eight of them are leasing companies, so it's not exactly what I was looking for, and then two of them. Were the, were businesses located within Andover, one is Benjamin Franklin, which is ProGuard, and the other is Sea Folsom. Excavation, or, I think they're an asphalt company, correct, Eric?
Construction, I think.
Construction, yeah.
Yeah, general constructions, verbs, I understand.
So, what we as a board need to look at, and, and how we need to, was like. Uh, what are the ones that may be missing on this, and, and what I told Eric is I'd like to get. The leasing companies out, because those are just individuals' cars, that they're either leased or financed through, and the. Taxes are being paid by those entities, so that we can get a breakdown, um. Of the entities, or the, or the individuals that have significant motor vehicle. Billings, so, anyway, um, this information is, is positive, at, at least. There were some things that I was looking for, and at least I saw certain things on this, um, but. In- interesting how the town makes money on cars, it's, you know. Like, if you look at ProGuard, which is Benjamin Franklin, there's twenty-six vehicles, and that's the total assessment value on those twenty-six vehicles, so. Each vehicle is twenty thousand dollars, um. Interesting, I mean, and look at these cars, like. That's, one day leasing is, you know, twenty-five thousand dollars per car. So on, so. Um, interesting information.
So, am I understanding that you wanna see? The top taxpayers for motor vehicles excluding the leasing companies, is that what you were? Really trying to get at here?
Um, let me get back to you on that, I wanna talk to the other members of the board and get an understanding of what they're thinking, and. You know, I, I do think it's good information to provide to us and to the public, because what it's showing them is these are. Within the community, these are the, this is how we make money, we make money. You know, charging property taxes on personal residences and commercial resi- uh, commercial, uh, property and, uh, personal. Uh, residences, and, you know, we make money on businesses that are registered in town, and. Uh, their property and vehicles, so, it's. Listen, we've got to understand how we're making money, and we all have to understand it, and we all have to, it all needs to make sense to everybody. So, it's just putting that information out there so that we're available. Now, do I want to see that information, Eric? Yes. Um, do I want you to sit there and have to go dig for that right now? No, I wanna talk to some of the other members to make sure that I'm not. Off on a. Something that doesn't make sense to them, so.
Okay, like a monthly report about where town is making money, every month we get to see a different. Piece of where the mon- money is made.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it gives us a little bit of, it at least shows us something different, I mean, but I'm not, not sure every month, Scott, just because. The assessor. You know. The assessor will put, like, we all just got our tax bills, right? I mean, they all showed up, um. Each one of us got a tax bill for our house, got a tax bill for every car that's registered within our address, and, um. We just need to understand that, and, and understand how it works, and be able to ask legitimate questions to the assessor about the. Way that those properties are assessed, and how the taxes are collected on those, and are the taxes being collected? Because I also saw something not in this last package, but the package before, and that Eric had provided from the tax collector. Where gave more of a list of delinquent. Taxpayers, so that's also something that we all need to pay attention to and look at, and. Help the tax collector, make sure the tax collector is going out collecting as much of that money as we possibly can get. And, and I would, um. And I would, Paula and Scott, I would also suggest that if you haven't, you should look at the CROG legislative report. That was very helpful to understand things that are, you know, ninety five percent of the items passed don't impact the town of Andover, but there are a lot. And, you know, speaking of that, Eric has, um, Eric, where is the meeting with the CROG officials? Is that at our town hall, or is that?
Yeah, no, that's here. They're coming out to meet with us. They go around periodically and, and talk to all the individual towns.
So, uh, Scott and Paula, if you are available, that would be good. I'm going to try to attend that. So. Do what you do. All right, um.
And Jeff, you were talking about the, the delinquent, uh, tax collector report. That's in your packet, starting around number forty, page forty nine.
Okay, I will look at that as well. Um, we're going to move on. Um, so item twelve. So this is the tax collector's report, right? So. Let's go look at that right now. What, what number did you say?
Uh, start looking about page forty nine.
So this is going to be a large collection month coming up, June, pretty light, seventy six thousand dollars. It looks like we still have three hundred and ninety one thousand dollars left to collect. A hundred and thirty seven thousand of that is still from twenty twenty two. And then you're right. So she, the tax collector gave us the delinquent report again. So we should all look at that and sit there and see what's up. And if we need to talk to someone, we should. And then Eric, what is the situation with this about going to?
A tax sale?
Not a tax sale, but is there a way, what is the tax collector doing to make sure that we collect on these? Are we putting forth liens? Or are we, what are we gonna do?
Go on the marshal.
Anything that's real estate gets a lien on it. Um, so you can't sell the damn thing without clearing the lien, because the town is the first lien holder, uh, in a sale. So, so that's real estate. And then there's personal property. Those are kind of harder to collect. Um, and then there are automobiles. Automobiles, the primary way you force that is by not allowing somebody to register a motor vehicle, um, unless they've cleared that. So those you tend to get later, but remember, we're getting eighteen percent interest on everybody that owes. So letting them owe for a few years actually makes the town a fair amount of money. Not necessarily great for the individual, but, but the, the town, it's almost better for the town not to collect right away, um, because we're collecting most of it anyway, and we're getting a lot of interest. So from a purely pragmatic standpoint, there's no reason to really chase those harder. And then the personal property, I think her intention is to start using a state marshal to go after them, because, um, a state marshal can actually, uh, seize their bank accounts, um, and get paid that way. It's kind of a harsh thing to do, but it will get you paid.
Okay. All right. Any questions on the tax collectors' information? All right, I'll move to item thirteen, department reports. Uh, any questions on any of the department reports that were provided from page seventy down? Uh, you know, Eric, the only thing that I, you know, the building permits, I would assume, would be a lot higher in June and July. Is that not the case?
Hmm, I can't answer that question off the top of my head. I can certainly.
There was twenty two building permits, wasn't there?
There were, yeah.
That's a lot, isn't it?
Well, I'm just asking, I mean, the total dollars generated was only sixty five hundred for the building department. So. Well, you should take a look at that and understand that.
Yeah, yeah, we were supposed to get, uh, revised building permit cost at one time.
Yep. So, I mean, it's just a question, uh, of Scott, the total dollars generated.
And twenty two with only sixty five hundred dollars just thrown.
Yeah. I mean, if you sit there and you think about the dollars that we invest in that department and the dollars generated, you know, it's not, it's not a significant amount.
There used to be a breakdown of that, I think, previously, wasn't there?
There's nine building permits. Now, the question is, are those nine decks, is that nine whole houses? I mean, the estimated cost on the nine building permits is only a hundred and ninety thousand dollars of construction cost. This has always been an issue for me mentally, but it's something, Eric, that we should look at, because it is pretty low. Uh, anybody else?
Are going up, that's for sure.
Yeah, you would hope. Anybody else on anything? Has Public Works, I'll just ask another one more question. Has Public Works done anything with the road sweeper?
Uh, in terms of fixing it? Yeah, they put it back on the road with.
Okay, is it sweeping roads now?
Yeah, we swept, everything that got chip sealed, uh, got swept one full sweeping once. Um, it's going to go back out and resweep all those in another week or so.
Have we, how many roads have we chip sealed already?
Uh, we've spent our whole chip seal budget, so everything that was on our list was chip sealed. Um, chip seal goes fast, that only takes a couple of days.
Are we all done with chip sealing?
We are.
Are we having any problems?
You know, it's a lot less dusty, uh, than it has been in years past. You know, I personally think it's a better product. Uh, the Public Works foreman disagrees with me, but I mean, I think that's, you know.
Have we gotten less complaints?
Yes.
Okay, then let's, let's see how it holds up, and then we'll go from there. Anybody else have any other questions?
I was going to suggest to have the, if we were still doing it, to have parking lot, the balance of the parking lot that wasn't paved, to make it look uniform. But a chip sealed that would have looked nice that. You have you guys looked at the driveway?
Parking lot at the field?
No, at the parking lot at the town hall.
Oh.
You know, but the part of it looks horrible. Three quarters of it look very nice.
I mean, I, I think we're going to end up. Realistically, I think we're going to end up tearing that pavement out and just repave it. You know, I, I mean, I don't think chip sealing at this point is necessarily a great plan for that.
No, Scott, you're not, you're not wrong. I went in, in, when I saw that paving, I told Eric we should have paved the whole parking lot, and we should have.
Right.
But that's okay. We'll, we'll get that straightened out and do a better job with that moving forward. So. Okay. Uh, anybody else have any other questions? Okay. Whoops, I went the wrong way. Sorry about that. Uh, item fourteen, correspondence. Eric, anything from correspondence?
No.
Okay. Uh, and we're going to move on to item fifteen, public speak. One second. Uh, Diane Grunier.
It would be me.
Yes.
Yeah, um. I wanted to talk about the, the Long Hill Bridge. And, um, I'm delighted that you're considering the aesthetic looks of the, the bridge when, uh, it's redone. I think that, that's, that's good. Um, Andover is starting to look really nice. A lot of little nuggets of places that are looking good, and this will add to that, and, uh, that, that's a good idea. I share your, your, um, concerns about Hendy Road and Route Six going to be a problem while that's being done, um, because there is no light there. Is there any way of having a temporary light put in there?
Feel free to go to the meeting and express your concerns to the DOT.
All good questions for tomorrow.
Okay, well, actually, I'm tethered to the house. I will not be able to attend the meeting, um.
It is a meeting.
It's Zoom, Diane.
Oh, is it?
Yes.
I will, I will try to attend that, but I said, I don't know, temporary light seemed like that might be an issue. Um, and again.
Good idea.
Yeah. So if I, if I'm not there, please bring it up.
I will.
Uh, the, the blight issue being addressed, um, I think that, again, I agree with Scott that that's a, a good idea. There's lots of places that are, um, looking a lot better in town, and, um, there's still some that need some attention, but, uh, I'm glad to see that that's being addressed, and I think everybody would agree with that. That's a, that's a good thing. So, um, I think that's it. Uh, oh. One more thing. I talked to, I think Scott about this, the, um, the new community and senior center. What is that rip rap mountain in the back? That looks god awful. And I know that that was not on the original plan, and I suspect that that's, um, follow the money issue, and I've talked to lots of people, and they all agree that that is just god awful, just god awful. The building looks so good, and you have that rip rap mountain. And I hope at some point there's a, a plan to tear that down and do a terrorist wall like, um, originally planned, because, again, it's just awful. It's just an accident waiting to happen. You know, children are going to play on that, and we're going to have a landslide or something. I don't know, just, I say aesthetically horrible, and it's a accident waiting to happen, so.
We're working on it, Diane. Thank you.
We're working on it, Diane.
It's getting us back to our nautical roots, Diane.
All right, Leanne, Leanne Hutchins.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, yes, thank you very much for your appointment tonight. Um, I'm really looking forward to it. And one of the things that I'm looking forward to the most, and it was into the programming, et cetera, is seeing how it plays out with any possible other staff members and the use of volunteers from town, um, and to what extent that might be, which is, I think it's been mentioned here and there at your meeting, January Board of Finance meeting. Thanks again.
All right, thank you very much. Joanne Ebert?
Yeah, I just had a couple of quick things I wanted to bring up. I'm glad you asked about the chip seal. Um, I am amazed at how good it looks. Um, having been of one of the streets that had a bad experience last year, so I'm so glad you went with this different contractor. I, driving down it the other day, knowing it was just done, and realizing that there wasn't the dust all over, and that it had already been properly swept and everything, it looks so good. I, I, I'm amazed. So I wanted, so I went on a couple of the streets I knew were going to be done, because I had told Eric before how disappointed I was in Bear Swamp. It just looks like an old street. And unfortunately, when my kids came home, they said, do we have a dirt road now? And again, we can't go back, but I'm happy for the, um, that you made the decision you did, because it looks like this product looks really good, and I hope the wear holds up, like you said, Jeff. Um, the other quick thing that I wanted to bring up was, um, just for your information, because you asked the question. Um, Eric didn't have the answer for you with why the board of, uh, at our Board of Finance meeting, um, last month, the Board of Ed happened to be there talking about a couple of things that, you know, an agreement that we're working on. So they had talked about, and Eric wasn't present at this meeting, I think he was, um, yeah. So the reason for turning away the engineering study um, that Eric maybe presented from a person that he knew, the Board of Ed just thought it was really, really high, expensive. So I'm surprised Eric, Eric told you guys he has no idea that the Board of Ed just wants their own. So I want to be positive in everything that all of our boards do together and just keep that positive, you know, vibe. It, it was nothing of that. They just felt it was really, really high. If my memory serves correctly, it was about nineteen thousand. Um, I could be totally wrong on that, but it was just the expense. So they wanted to go out and get another estimate on the survey or the plan or the engineering study. I'm not good at that kind of language, but that's all. Just wanted to answer the question. Thank you.
Okay. All right, uh, Paula, are you in control of the meeting? Okay, um, everyone, thank you very much. Uh, next on the list, we do have an executive session that I would like to, um, uh, speak about, um, employment issue. And what I would like to do is, um, I'd like to invite Eric, but it concerns Eric, and I've already spoken to him. I'd like to speak to the group without him to begin with, and then we'll bring Eric in. So everybody else, thank you for joining us. Uh, we appreciate it. And, uh, Paula, if you can get everyone else out of the meeting, and then put Eric into the waiting room for two minutes, and then we'll be good.
Recording stopped.
Recording stopped.